Welcome, everybody, to this evening's World's Best Workforce Annual Public Meeting. Today is Monday, December 11th, 2017, 6:00 PM in the Arlene Bush Board Room. All board members are present. Yes, and can I get approval of the agenda?
Uh-huh. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I will turn it over to Eric Melby. You take it from here. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Oh geez. We just had this conversation. We said it's my last meeting, don't screw it up. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I know Tom in the back, after the last meeting, they showed us the truck, and I know they have all kinds of editing software where they can rearrange this on the replay, so it'll all go in the right order. So now, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby.
Thank you, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, and the public that is here tonight and viewing on TV. We're here for our 2016-17 World's Best Workforce Annual Report. Just a brief, real brief, little bit of history. In 2013, the state legislature passed the World's Best Workforce Law, which requires every district to make and create a World's Best Workforce Plan, designed to make sure that you're meeting the benchmarks and the milestones for students along what we in Bloomington call our pathways to graduation. So tonight, you're going to get to hear from the assembled folks at the table here tonight what we did last year. First, Dr. Heistad actually will be sharing our results from last year in terms of what's measured for the World's Best Workforce. And then, I've got Rachel Jens with me, I've got Kelly Spees with me, I've got Beth Stengline with me, I've got Dr. Jenna Mitchler, I've got Mike Jones from our Pathways Advisory Committee, he's the chairman of the Pathways Advisory Committee, and Andy Kubus, our Learning Supports Director. They'll all be sharing some of the slides that we're sharing with you and the public tonight about what we did last year, a little bit of that, and a little bit of what our plans are moving forward. At the end of this meeting, we'll be done with this part of the report, then we will submit a written report to the Department of Education by the end of the week. And at the board meeting after this, you all will be talking about the World's Best Workforce Report a little bit more. And assuming that that goes well, then Rick Hoffman's office will be sending out the school pages with the annual report, which includes the World's Best Workforce Report for the public, and we'll also post that on the website for anybody who wants to take a look at it. So, that's my opening. I will pass the microphone to Dr. Heistad, who will begin with our results.
Thank you, Eric. Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board Directors. This presentation will cover all five of the goals for the World's Best Workforce that are outlined in legislation. The first goal is the percentage of students who are kindergarten-ready. And this is the one goal that we didn't achieve this year. We have seen a decrease in the percentage of students that are proficient on the kindergarten entry test. You can see that the green portion of the stacked bars has gone from 57.1% in 2015 to 48.5% in 2007. The yellow band has increased from 23.5% to 30.7%. So we don't have very much difference in the percentage of students who are not at all close to proficient, but we have an increase in the partially proficient. So more students are just not at the bar. We set the bar so it predicts being ready to read well by third grade, so it's a high standard. It's a difficult standard, and my colleagues can discuss what things might be going on in early childhood to cause this decline. One of the factors we know is an increase in risk factors among the students that are coming into Bloomington. The second slide is for numeracy. This isn't required by the law, but since our assessment measures numeracy quite well and predicts third-grade math results, we thought we would share this as well. Here, we've gone from 59.7% proficient in 2015 to 60.6% proficient in 2017, so a slight increase. So the decrease that we saw in literacy was not apparent in numeracy. I should mention for the viewing public, the kindergarten assessment tests basic areas of literacy, like knowing your letters, the capital letters and the lowercase letters, knowing the sounds of the letters, knowing the ending of words, rhyming is one of the tasks that you do, and also the beginning sounds of words. There's some, you know, really easy, easy for first grade, tough for kindergarten, sight words like "I" and "we," et cetera. And then, we also measure counting, knowing your numbers, patterns in blocks, we count blocks as well as count the numerals, et cetera. So it's, these are the basic kinds of numeracy and literacy skills that are in the state standards that we measure on a yearly basis at the very beginning of kindergarten. So this is assessing progress that has been made in preschool. The next area of goal, Goal Two, is reading well by third grade. And our benchmark is right at about the, what is considered grade level, the 50th national And we've seen an increase from last year, from 59.9% hitting this benchmark to 61.7. We hit the goal for that area based on a 1% increase from '16 to '17, but we are a little bit lower than we were in 2015. The state has been declining in third-grade reading at a rate of about 2% a year, so for us to maintain and to actually increase from last year is good. The third goal is closing achievement gaps, and there are many different ways of looking at achievement gaps. The first way is to look at the proficiency on the, the reading proficiency for all students who take the MCA III in the spring of the year. And we've seen increases for just one of our major groups, and that was American Indian students. American Indian students were at 29.6% proficient in 2014-15. They're now at 50% proficient in 2016-17. So in that area, we're partially meeting the goal. In other areas, we've declined a bit from last year, and we didn't meet our goals for the other racial/ethnic groups besides American Indian students. The second part of the MCA trends is for mathematics. And here, we see, again, our American Indian students have increased from 45.8% proficient in 2014-15 to 59.1% proficient in 2016-17. Asian students have stayed about the same compared to two years ago. Hispanic students have decreased slightly. African-American decreased slightly from two years ago, but up .2% from last year. So it's kind of a mixed set of results. White American students have stayed stable from 2015 to 2017. But the one, the one group that really stands out is the American Indian students. Another way of looking at the gaps, and the board members have seen this display before, this is where we look at how much learning takes place during the year, from the fall of the year to the spring of the year. And we've seen that the learning rates have increased for all students. Last year, we were at 54.2% hitting national norms. Now, we're up to 58.8% hitting national norms. And American Indian students increased by over two points, Asian students by over two points, Hispanic students by almost a point, African-American students by two points. So in terms of how much learning is taking place, each of the racial/ethnic groups improved. And we had set a goal for all groups to hit 50%, which would be the national average. If the national norms, half the students would be above, and half the students would be below. The only group that was just under that was Hispanic at 49.9. Free and reduced price, and English language learners were at 47%. So the area that we've targeted for additional study and intervention is English language learners who are Spanish-speaking at home, because we'd like to see those percentages also increase over 50%, and those students accelerating towards the high standards. In the area of mathematics, again, we saw most racial/ethnic groups show an increase. Asian students were up two and a half points. Hispanic and American Indian students were down a little, but African-American students were up two points. And white American students were up five and a half points. So in this case, we see a little bit more of a mixed set of results. And this is a year, and our, my colleagues will be talking about the year of mathematics, with rolling out the math standards and providing lots of supports to teachers. So I won't steal their thunder on that. Here we have the Goal Four, which is for all students to graduate from high school. We use a six-year graduation rate to monitor progress. Special needs students can stay in Bloomington schools until they're 21, so it's not really fair to hold them accountable for a four-year graduation rate. We've seen the six-year graduation rate increase for all groups from 2012-13 to 14-15. The most dramatic increase was Hispanic students who, two years ago, or I mean, three years ago, were at 66.2% graduating within six years, and now are up to 82.5% in 2015-16. Asian students are up three points. American Indian students are up over 10 points. White students have maintained at about 94% of the students graduating within six years. So this is, this is good progress, and especially for our Hispanic students, there's been a tremendous increase in the graduation rate. And then, Goal Five, we have a series of graphs that show how students are doing on the Measures of Academic Progress, our MAP test, in achieving towards college readiness. And this first graph is of all students that were continuously enrolled from first grade through fifth grade, ending with the 2017 Spring Assessment. And you can see that students, on average, started near the green line, which is on course to get into a four-year Minskou College, like Mankato State, or Winona, or St. Cloud. And those students were right about at that line, on average, in first grade, and accelerated, so they're getting closer to on course for a select four-year college, like the University of Minnesota. So this is the kind of steady increase we'd like to see. The black line represents the continuously enrolled students. The blue squares represent the students who are mobile. So these are students who either came in after first grade or left before fifth grade, and those students, on average, score quite a bit lower than the continuously enrolled students. So all students in this cohort are represented in the graph, so it's not just the continuously enrolled students. But we do have a challenge with the students who are mobile, whether it's because of housing situations, or homelessness, or other factors that cause student staff to move out of the district. In grades five through eight, we see a more conservative or steady progress, but equivalent to staying on track for a basic four-year college. You don't see the acceleration in middle-school reading that you saw in grades one through five. And here, we see, again, that the mobile students score much lower than the continuously enrolled students, but we would hope to see this line accelerating towards the four-year college, the on course to get into the University of Minnesota at a higher rate. And so, that's an area of goal. I don't know why we lost our feed internally. I'm hoping that the external feed to the television is still working. If it isn't, maybe I'll pause for a second. Should I?
It's working on this one.
Oh, it is working here? So it's just this one? Okay, we're fine. I can, I've got my own monitor here. So when we go to mathematics for grades one to five, you see even more dramatic increase from first grade to fifth grade, with students starting on course for a basic four-year college and heading towards an average, almost at the score that would be necessary for getting to the University of Minnesota. And I should add that the analysis that was done four and a half years ago to create these graphs was to look at the ACT scores of students in 11th grade, and then go back to eighth grade and say, what kind of scores would they need in eighth grade? And then seventh and sixth, all the way back down to first grade. So it's, it's not as if we're telling students in first grade that they're on course for Carlton. I mean, that's a little ludicrous. But actually, starting at fifth grade, you do see quite a bit of a success in predicting how students are going. And the closer students get to high school, the higher the prediction rate. So by the time your, a student is in seventh grade, it's over 80% likely that the student will hit their target. We also have these graphs available for parents when they log into the parent portal, which we call the hub. Then they can see that their individual child or children's scores right after the MAP test is finished in the spring, and they can check on their individual student's progress. Now, in grades six through eight, we see a line that's a little bit, you know, closer to parallel, maybe coming down a little bit, but it's not accelerating towards on course for the University of Minnesota. So again, we have more of a challenge in middle school, especially in mathematics, to see the acceleration continue so that students are making more progress towards their goals, if their goals are to go to a select college, for example. Every individual trend is different. So, and the growth spurts, when you look at individual students, are amazing. So you may see a student kind of not doing very well for several years, and then, all of a sudden, a growth spurt in mathematics, or a growth spurt in reading, and you can see students rapidly accelerate. So just because a student, individual student, is below the target that they and the parents have set for their future goals, it is not deterministic, and with good interventions, students do increase. And then finally, we also measure on course for college and career readiness with an ACT composite of 18 or above. And for this analysis, the denominator is all the students enrolled in 11th grade, and the numerator is the number of students with 18 or above. So we've seen an increase since 2014-15 from 58.2% to 60.7%. And part of that is due to more students taking the test, and some students that would have been predicted not to do well on the ACT actually do well. And then, of course, we're making good progress in our high school. All the indicators, our ninth-grade MAP results were phenomenal last year, so students are growing in both reading and math at a higher rate than the national norms. So as a summary of the five goals, we met, or partially met, Goals Two, Three, Four, and Five. Goal Three, decreasing achievement gaps, we just partially met with the American Indian students making such good progress. The one goal we did not meet was kindergarten readiness, and I'll leave it to my colleagues to discuss that further. Are there any questions of me regarding the data? Dick?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you for coming.
I should say, with a fancy tie.
Holiday tie. Okay, I did put some notes down here. We, a couple of these slides, and let's see, it's on my page three, it looks like the sixth slide. It's Goal Three, Bloomington Public Schools Aim to Close Achievement Gaps in Reading.
Yes.
There's eight different groups.
Yes.
And I'm curious to know, how many students are in more than one group?
Many students are in more than one group. We have 50% of our students are students of color, 50% are white students. A high percentage of our students of color are also receiving free or reduced-price lunch. A certain percentage, which I don't know off the top of my head, Beth probably can give you that percentage, are English language learners. And then, about 13% of the students are special education. And some students receive special education services, English language learner services, and are receiving free or reduced-price lunch. So there are some students that are in all four. But this is the way the state reports the data, and have ever since no child left behind. Instead of trying to do in a hierarchy and say, you can only be free and reduced lunch, they'll put people in multiple categories, and just know that the total adds up to more than 100%. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, just, just curious, because I didn't know if it would skew any of the results or change the numbers, or, because I know you can have, like you said, you can have, you know, one student in three or four different categories.
And the students that are receiving both English language learner services and special ed services tend to be quite in need of acceleration. So they tend to have, have lower starting points than either special ed students, on average, or ELL students, on average. And we do have a significant number of students that are in that multiple category.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when I'm looking at the summary page, obviously, I'm looking at the goal that we did not meet, the kindergarten readiness. And I'm wondering if there's any type of breakdown that we, we have, or that you have, between kids that either went to preschool here in Bloomington, or went to preschool outside of Bloomington, or didn't go to preschool at all? Just so we can see if, is, are our preschool programs having an impact on proficiency at kindergarten readiness?
That's an excellent question, Director Bennett. I have done what's called match sample analyses of our kinder prep program and our most recent four-year-old programs. The first three years that I did the analysis, our kinder prep students were doing significantly better than a matched sample of non-kinder prep students. You match on the demographic factors that are available once the student begins in kindergarten. But this last year, there was a small difference in favor of our, our four-year-old programs, but it wasn't statistically significant.
Okay.
So, so in general, we have seen large differences between our, but not this last year.
Okay, so when, when students come in to take the kindergarten assessment, is there like a box on this that says, did you go to preschool? Did you go to preschool in Bloomington? Or how do we know where these kids are coming from?
That's an excellent question as well. This is one of the areas that we are developing a birth-through-five database to be able to capture the information about what kinds of preschool experiences students have had. And so, we don't have a systematic way of collecting that information on all students, and we're moving towards that. The state also has a SLEDs database for, for the youngest children, starting from birth, that they're developing. And I call it the baby SLEDs. But the baby SLEDs isn't built yet, and we're not going to wait until the state has it built before we start putting together this information. So right now, I can just tell you whether students who weren't in our four-year-old program did as well as our four-year-old program, but I don't know how many of those were in private preschools, how many of them were in church-based placements, how many were at home, and how many didn't have any preschool experience, so.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to know, especially with the state's investment in the voluntary preschool money. It's like, well, is that money, is that investment actually working?
Is it working? And it's not for tonight's presentation, but the innovation zone that we're working on, an application, is designed to address specifically that question, and to get more supports to our community partners, and, and information about how their students are doing. So if I did know which preschool programs every student was at, then I could send back information from our BECA, our Beginning of Kindergarten Assessment, to show, to let them know how they're doing in terms of increasing readiness for kindergarten as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, a similar question in relation to the kindergarteners. Do we know what number, or if there was a significant increase in the percentage of students who are kindergarten, who are ELL students, between 2015 and 17?
There was a slight increase. There was an increase. I don't have that percentage off the top of my head, but it is online under Information Services. John Weiser presented those data, and so if you looked at the kindergarten, oh, well, I'm not sure if it's broken out by kindergarten alone. I will, we will get you that information, but there was an increase.
It just makes me wonder, you know, if the number is increasing and is going faster since our population keeps growing.
I think both the English language learner and special education percentage increased for kindergarteners.
Which would probably explain part of why we didn't meet this goal, right? Which would probably explain part of why we didn't meet this goal, right?
Okay, well, let's keep it moving.
Great, when I was introducing the team here, I neglected to say what a few people's jobs were. So for Rachel Jen's right next to me, she's the Elementary Curriculum and Instruction Specialist, teacher on special assignment. Kelly Spees is our Q Comp and Mentor Program Coordinator. Beth Engline is the EL Supervisor, English Learner Program Supervisor, and Dr. Mitchler is the Curriculum and Instruction Specialist for secondary schools. As these guys share what we did last year and a little bit of our program plans for this year, when the board is meeting in their formal meeting after this, you'll be learning a little bit more about strategic plan updates. And keep in mind that all the work that's happening is framed around our three strategic objectives, which are instruction, learning supports, and resource management. So it's just kind of planted in your brain for later this evening when we have that discussion. In the interest of time, too, because I know that we want to be out of here by about ten to seven so that the TV folks have a time to do their magic and be ready for the board meeting, these guys will be presenting, and if we have time for questions, of course, we're happy to answer them at the end. I will put you guys on the spot and say that if we don't have time for questions, and there's a lot of questions, we're happy, and I know we're coming back to give an English learner report and some other things like that, but we can come back in chunks or segments to give more information. If you have questions about certain things, and for members of the public, you can always email me or any of the team here for questions that you might have. So, that being said, I'm going to pass the clicker to Rachel.
All right, and we will start with some of our strategies to ensure that our students are coming ready for school when they're entering kindergarten. So the early learning instructional team has continued to make standards-based instruction a priority in both their birth-to-two classes, as well as our three- and four-year-old preschool programs. So an example of this, during the 2016-17 school year, teams of teacher leaders updated their thematic units of study to make sure that they were aligned to new Minnesota early learning standards. And then our teacher leaders provided professional development to their colleagues on implementing those units during 271 Learns, which is Bloomington's new summer professional development summit. Preschool staff also updated the way that they are sharing progress reports with families to make sure that parents have progress reports that indicate how well students are performing compared to those new Minnesota early childhood standards. So in addition, early learning staff are supported by mentors and Q Comp coaches. They are focusing on providing job-embedded professional development related to culturally responsive teaching to early learning services staff. Additionally, last year, preschool staff invited families to three family learning-together days throughout the year, and the goal of these days was to do some parent education on how families can support their students at home. Preschool staff are also meeting in regular professional learning communities to study assessment data and to share instructional strategies that are focused around meeting educational standards. And there's been an increased focus on making sure that those instructional strategies are culturally responsive for all students. Similar to their early learning services counterparts, our elementary teachers are also continuing to focus on standards-based literacy instruction, and teachers are measuring progress that students are making towards meeting grade-level benchmark using a variety of assessment tools. We also updated our progress reports to be standards-based this year, and so families are kept informed about their child's progress through the use of those standards-based progress reports. Teachers also participated in quite a bit of professional development around the use of the Benchmark Assessment System. This is an individual diagnostic reading assessment that is given to all students two times each year, students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. This assessment really yields a lot of very useful information about individual students' strengths and their areas of growth so that teachers can utilize this information to design effective interventions for students and to design differentiated small-group instruction as well. Our elementary classrooms are also equipped, as you know, with Chromebooks and iPads, and so teachers have participated in professional development around using digital tools to support literacy instruction. And last year, we supported all teachers in having release time to either create or curate and gather digital resources with the intent of personalizing learning for students using those resources. Our elementary teachers are also supported by mentors and Q Comp coaches as well. Those Q Comp coaches provide regular feedback to teachers through the teacher evaluation and support process. And again, an increased focus on making sure that teachers understand and are using culturally responsive teaching strategies. And our professional learning communities continue to be one of our primary ways in which we offer professional development. Teachers meet in their professional learning communities to review assessment data and to share strategies to increase student achievement.
I see Kelly pulled the microphone over. That's my other job tonight, is make sure everybody speaks clearly into the microphone. Thank you, Kelly.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about goal three, and that's closing that achievement gap. And Beth Engline is going to chime in, because our two teams work very closely together to make a difference in this area. We're continuing to upgrade our curriculum. We talked a little earlier, Dr. Heistead talked a little bit about the math curriculum. We've done extensive work with the standards in the reading curriculum. And again, just to reiterate, that culturally responsive teaching, are these materials accessible to all students? And that's a constant journey and work that we're doing so that students see themselves reflected in the content, but also can access the content through strategies for all students. We have tiered systems of support. We are, on an ongoing basis through our work in our PLCs, we're monitoring student progress and adjusting instruction and support for students to make sure that they continue to thrive in the classroom and continue to move forward. And that was really illustrated when Dr. Heistead went over the growth measures and how well we've done in the growth areas for those students. We continue to try to find ways to use technology, again, to provide more resources for all of our students, and also to differentiate instruction so that we can address the different ability groups within a classroom. The mentors and the coaches continue to get extensive professional development. Director Corman, you asked that question last year about the kind of training that we all get. The mentors and the coaches work together and have taken... Currently, right now, we're at about fifty-six hours of training on culturally responsive teaching. What is that, and what strategies can we work with our teachers to use to make that curriculum, again, more accessible for students? We also meet on a weekly basis as a team to talk about where we're at and to support each other in our knowledge base around that as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Beth Engline to talk a little bit about the work that we've done to bridge the ELL co-teaching model and ELL, more specific, ELL strategies.
Hi, so we are working a lot this year on professional developments around best practice with our English learners. And our big push is to work with the Q Comp coaches, because they work with every single teacher birth to age twenty-one. And we are working really hard with them on talking about what is best practice for English learners, specifically the academic language that needs to be brought into the classroom to support them, making connections to culturally and linguistically where they're coming from. And really, and this sounds like a small thing, but it's pretty important, how much they're talking in class, how much they're using academic language and interacting and showing what they know in class. So that has been really a very productive relationship this year. The other thing we're focusing on, two things, is, one is early childhood, right? And how, what kind of service are we providing to kids before they start kindergarten? And I think right now, it's about sixty percent of our students who are in our preschool programs are dual-language learners. So we're working with the Director of Early Education to identify how we're going to assess these kids and how we're going to provide professional development for the teachers in early childhood so that there's a better connection between the early childhood program and when they start the K-12 EL program. The other thing we're really focused on this year is our math program. Secondary adopted a new math program. Elementary is in the process of adopting a new math program. So we are working to get professional development targeted to every math teacher around, again, what is best practice for English learners in their classroom, and how they can embed language into their instruction. We are also working with the University of Minnesota and a researcher from the University of Minnesota to look at our math scores, to look at the language piece and the content piece of math, and how we can find other districts, other states, that are using research-based best practice to better support our teachers.
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about goals four and five related to graduation rates and college and career readiness. And I'll just start by saying that Dr. Heistead mentioned in the beginning that students in our secondary programs have math scores that are exceeding our national average, so we're very excited and proud of that. But there are a few things that we're doing in order to work towards these goals. So in 2016-17, with relation to our goal around graduation, we implemented a multi-tiered systems of support framework. And we have various categories of this framework that we are doing work within. So you can see those listed here on the screen, but specifically around working in collaborative teams, doing work around data-based problem-solving, trying to integrate our academic, social, emotional, and behavioral instruction, balancing assessment, and then family and community engagement. We're also working with our site leaders in each of the buildings at the secondary and actually at the elementary and early learning levels to help them create site strategic plans with their building leadership teams that are aligned to this multi-tiered system of support framework. Also, in relation to helping students graduate from high school, we have specific differentiated student supports in place at our buildings, our secondary buildings. One of them is AVID, Advanced Advancement via Individual Determination. We also have academic seminars at our high schools and sectionals where teachers can take students, yeah, in groups and work with them around remediation or acceleration. Of course, our mentors and our teacher evaluation Q Comp coaches are also working with teachers to help them know some best practices around intervention and acceleration. And as we mentioned, at the other levels, our personal learning communities are trying to do some work around action research and helping students graduate from high school. One example I'll give is that at Beacon, the Alternative Learning Program, the PLC there is working with their eleventh and twelfth grade students to try to increase graduation rates by building relationships. So they're doing things like check and connect, taking students out of the classroom one-on-one and meeting with them and having conversations, mini tutoring sessions. They're finding a lot of success there, it's exciting. And then goal five, which is around having our students be ready for college and career, we're working hard to make sure that our programs are aligned, especially around the personal growth plans, PGP's, and our technical education programming, CTE, as well as with our American Counseling Standards and our counselors in our buildings. The personal growth plans have been rolled out for the last couple of years at our high school level, so we're doing iteration there. And at the middle school level, we've rolled them out this past year. And I'm going to pass the baton over to Mike Jones from our PAC Committee, our Pathways Advisory Committee, to talk a little bit about the work that group is doing. But I'll just mention that you can see here on this last slide that I'll present, there is an overview of some of the things that all of us have mentioned here from my team in regard to what we're doing to help students be successful here in our district.
Okay, you've heard from all the professionals, now you'll hear from a parent. Pathways Advisory Committee is primarily representative from each of the schools. So we have a lot of elementary parents, some middle school parents, and two high school parents. And then we have representation from the curriculum groups here. We also have school board representation, Nellie, thank you. And so we kind of have a way to get back to you. In the last year, well, actually, last year, the standard-based progress report that Rachel mentioned was brought to us before they rolled it out. And we read it, and we were all totally confused, and we were normal parents, so we knew that the normal parents would be totally confused as well. So we talked about it, and what it included, and how it could be presented, and how it could be rolled out so that everybody would actually learn from it. We heard about flex spaces in the high school. There may be some in the elementary school, I haven't heard about them yet. But since we only have two high school representatives, we didn't know much about that. But then we found out about, specifically at Jefferson, where they had places where he could go and work on projects as teams. And all the concerns that parents had immediately popped up. For example, are they supervised? Yes, they are. And so all the additional things that have to be considered when you enter flexibility into the students' learning. The curriculum review process used to be seven years, and we just keep smushing it down smaller and smaller. And the idea is to, as the state changes standards in a particular area, we want to make certain that we reflect those standards as quickly as we can. So we have a process that we go through. We get feedback to our committee. We typically, in the past, have had a member of our committee sit on each of the development review groups so that we can get feedback at each meeting from them, what's been going on within the meetings. So there aren't any big surprises. And then when the curriculum review committees are completed, they come to PAC as one of the groups that looks at the final product before they present it to the board, to see if there's something that's of concern to us. And occasionally, there is, mostly, there isn't. What we typically try to do is make certain that the review process that's been outlined has been followed, and that's what we're basically voting on when we pass something on to the school board. And with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. Learned a lesson last year, so I had a lot of content to go over last year. I was last also, and then I had to race through it. So I intend today to kind of keep us elevated, but make sure to report out to the public about the stuff that's been happening around achievement and integration. For me, this is the slide that always needs to precede the conversation. And so, working here at the district office, coming from a site, one of the things that we wanted to make sure, when we talked about our achievement integration plan, is that we're tethered to something. And for us, it's our Pathways to Graduation document here. Whatever iteration this takes on, we're proud of the fact that in our on-the-ground work with the Office of Educational Equity, the work that they do with kids is tethered to this document to make sure that we're all kind of singing from the same songbook, if you will. And so that's been a huge, huge part that has really galvanized the work that we're doing. And so I want to make sure that we pay attention to that. Two things come to me when I see that. One, that's a diagram that shows equity to me, that we have the same standards, we're checking in at the same time with kids to make sure that they're following along and they're doing okay. And the second part is the PGP that was touched on a little bit, and I'll say a little bit about that as well. So the achievement integration plan, every three years, we're required to submit a new plan for achievement integration, and the rules typically change a little bit, maybe ten degrees every time that that happens. And so we're always kind of in the process of tweaking those and understanding them. Our new plan, if you recall, what we brought to you last March, was submitted and approved in early spring. And that plan has to be aligned with the World's Best Workforce Plan, and that's why we sit here together as a group, to make sure that you see that there's some correlation between the work. And so what are the pieces of our new plan? I want to first start by talking about how that plan got put together. So a new piece of that achievement integration plan was a leadership team that helped guided the work. So in other words, in a colloquial sense, it can't be two people in a room who just come up with great ideas. There was a team that had many of the administrators and staff members from the two racially-isolated schools, as well as Rick Kaufman's office. There was a cross-representation of school district staff to come up with this plan. We attended several MDE guidance sessions that allowed us the ability to align the new plan with the parameters that were set up. We saw... We sought input from various stakeholders to help shape that plan, and we continue to align that plan with our pathways work. So, there are actually, uh, four goals to that plan. I put three here, we'll put the fourth one in, in the slideshow that goes on the, uh, the website. The reason, again, for conciseness, these are the three that we're working on right now. So again, it's a three-year plan, and each of the goals have at least seven or eight, um, objectives. And so it's a comprehensive plan. We can't, as the saying goes, eat the entire elephant all at once, so we're picking apart at the plan, and I wanted to just give you, in the interest of time, but making sure that we, we give you some input, uh, I'm sorry, some, some understanding, uh, I wanted to just touch on a couple different things that are happening with each of these goals that are listed up here. So the first one is to increase achievement and provide programming and support options to promote college and career readiness for the underserved students in grades K through 12. So there are a couple of things I'd want to, I'd want to touch on there that kind of get into our objectives of that first goal. And the first that was talked about, and we've had many conversations about the PGP. And so the PGP continues to evolve to make sure that we've got 100% of our students eventually who have a career and college plan, so that when they, when they graduate, we're making sure that we are graduating, uh, contributing members of the society. And so the skeleton is there, and every day, it seems like a little more meat and bones go on that skeleton as we get different pieces that go onto the PGP to make it more robust. Uh, we've sat here before where we, we, I showed you a slide about at one point, the PGP was a, uh, one-size-fits-all, and now we've figured out that, uh, we, we need a PGP that fits not only someone who struggles, uh, to, to come up with a career and college plan, but we need a PGP that fits for students who already know where they're going in eighth grade. And so, uh, that can, that work continues to get done and is a huge part of, of our achievement integration piece. The second part is a, is an example that comes from Valley View Middle School, and so, uh, they have something there called the Nobel Program. It's a humanities-gifted program, and one of the objectives of the new achievement integration plan was to grow that. And so if you could picture, just for the sake of the conversation, the cohort of kids in the Nobel Program are about 25 per grade level, so about one section per grade level, 25 at sixth grade, 25 at seventh grade, 25 at eighth grade, and we're making good growth on that. Uh, what we did this past year, so I'll give a, a little reporting as well as the future, is we really targeted some marketing, and we wanted to make sure that we had transportation that was guaranteed for students across the school district. And so just checking actually today serendipitously, uh, the new number of kids who are qualified and have applied for the Nobel Program at Valley View is 60. So we more than doubled the amount of students across the school district who want to go to Valley, or want to consider going to Valley View Middle School to attend the Nobel Program. So the conversation we're having now is, okay, how do we, how do we build the capacity for this now? That's a good, that's a good problem to have, that what we said we wanted to get accomplished, we got accomplished, and we're, and we're growing that program. The second goal that's listed there is the increase of professional development opportunities that will reach 100% of the Bloomington Public Schools staff. For us, the iteration around that is with equity, and so we're all familiar with the fact that last, uh, spring, we launched our Equity Needs Assessment, and we did, uh, we sent that out to a lot of different families, and what we're doing currently now is taking that data. So we had 700 staff members who responded to that survey, we had 1,366 students who responded to that survey, and we had over 400 parents who responded to that survey. We also, at the same time, in a parallel universe, did some work around some student focus groups to get their feelings about how their experience is in the Bloomington Public Schools. We're in the midst of unpacking that data, and so what I've done is, uh, two different times now, or one, one school shy of two different times, what we've done is met with, um, building administration and site leaders to show them their data and help them unpack their data so that they can own their data. It's really important that the sites understand what kids are feeling like at the sites, the staff is feeling, and the parents are feeling, so that they can make a plan around their achievement integration and the equity plan that matches their school, because we know that schools are in different places. So our ultimate goal, I have to say, is, uh, we're not here to indoctrinate anybody about what they should or shouldn't believe. Our goal is that every single teacher should have the skills available to them so that they can meet the needs of the kids who sit in front of them. That's the most important part. I'd be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't reach out to, uh, and, and give compliments to Kelly Spees and her team to make sure that, uh, they understand that, uh, they've been working with us as Q Comp coaches. Kelly talked about her 56 hours of, of training that the, that group has done. The last one is, uh, implement practices that recruit, employ, support, and retain racially and linguistically diverse staff. And so in partnering with HR, in the interest of time here, I just got the card that says that we're out of time, uh, I want to make sure that I'll just give you one strategy. Uh, and so Mary Burrows, who's the executive director of HR, and I have met, and we've come up with, uh, a series of five questions that every, uh, and to start with, teacher candidate will be asked, that get at their cultural competency and their cultural belief set. And so I rolled those out to principals just this last Thursday, got them to look at them to make sure they understood what we're getting at. Uh, the elementary principals were very excited about it, uh, and so I'll leave it by saying this, that we're gonna be training our current staff on what it means to be culturally responsive and give them the tools that they need, and we should also be doing that same thing to the people who walk into our school district, uh, as we partner with them for, for employment. So, we're excited about all the work. I could talk all night, as many of you know, uh, but in the interest of time, you're always welcome to reach out to me and, and if you have any questions, uh, school board members, superintendent, and, and public alike. I'll turn it back to Eric Melby.
Uh, I, I knew we were gonna get close to time, and I want to be respectful of the TV folks and, and Chair Leiva running the meeting. I just want to thank the folks that came here tonight. You can see we've got a nice representation of teacher leaders and administrators that are collaborating to, uh, hopefully provide the best possible programming that we can for Bloomington students and families, and I'll just end with that.
Well, thank you for being here. I know we have tons of questions. I think next time, we need to have a longer meeting. Uh, well, you all can have a longer meeting, I'll be in the audience watching you. Uh, so thank you again, and, uh, yeah, well, I have 10 questions that I need to ask too, so maybe I'll just pass them along in an email. So thank you, and we'll adjourn for about five minutes, we'll be back with our regular board meeting.